Watching and for those of you here in attendance, we'll begin by having our invocation by Councilman Portnett and Councilman Tipton leading us into the pledge of allegiance.
All right, everybody. Thank you Father God, in the name of Jesus, for allowing us to come together tonight. Thank you for the people that are present, thank you for the ones who elected to be present. Lord, I'm just asking that you be on our hearts and our minds for the citizens of Pasca Gula. We want to make sure these people are treated right, they deserve the best. So, Lord, if there's a power reigning out in heaven, may we all make direct see. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
She's going in to pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have an amendment to the agenda? Does the acting city manager or the acting city attorney have an amendment to the agenda?
Councilmember, I have two substitutions on the consent agenda. Both are at your desk. One is a correctional amendment from seven A regarding a vote that was taken. And then the other one is a correctional resolution for seven I listed Mr. Wilbert to replace him, Mr. Portnett.
If there are no other amendments, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Is there a second? All those in favor, stick a five, saying aye, any opposed? Community recognition, anyone here from the Mayor's Youth Council? You are the lucky one, would you please stand up? Tell us your name, what grade you're in, and what school you attend.
I'm Abby Dennis, I'm in middle of the third grade, and I go high school, high school.
And do you hold an office in the youth council?
Uh-uh.
Okay, well, we thank you, appreciate you coming, and always appreciate the work that the Mayor's Youth Council does, thank you. All right, business spotlight tonight is Cajun Clean Car Wash, and I presume we have a video, a working video today?
If it does.
Spice up your ride before the holiday season bubbles in Cajun Clean Express Car Wash on Highway 90 next to Perkins Tire and Polaris in Pasca Gula. Cajun Clean Car Wash is open seven days a week from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and they are proud to have attentive and friendly staff available to assist customers from the time you enter the car wash to the end. At Cajun Clean Car Wash, you'll find top-of-the-line car washing equipment from the basic car wash to the works. Customers can choose their level of Cajun Clean from mild, medium, spicy, or Cajun hot at unbeatable prices. Don't forget the interior of your car. Vacuum and mat cleaning services are complimentary with the purchase of any level of car wash. Cajun Clean Express Car Wash provides quality service and an overall great experience for their customers. They want to make sure your cars are not just clean, they're Cajun clean.
Is there anyone here from Car Wash? In a prior life, many, many years ago, when I owned a gas station, I looked into pricing out a car wash. And just the very simple bay with the basic machinery, you were looking at easily $300,000. I can tell you that they have spent probably well over a million dollars on this car wash. I have not been there yet, but it sure looks fine, and we really appreciate Cajun Clean for investing in our community. Thank you. All right, as far as addressing the council, the Pasca Gula Redevelopment Authority regarding an amendment to the memorandum of understanding, that's Alan Suddath and Donovan. So whichever one of you, whoever wants to, don't everybody run to the podium, please.
Hey, we regret that decision later. Good evening, you may have a letter from us where a couple of years ago, a little bit of the history here, a couple of years ago, we were part of the budget of the city. And in addition to that, we were managing Anchor Square and doing some other responsibilities we had for the redevelopment area. When the city had the financial situation come up a couple of years ago, we were asked to forego a budget. Item by item that year, to understand, and then also said, hey, we were asked to pick up the expenses relative to Anchor Square in addition to not getting a budget. So we had some money that we had there from the previous year, and we worked on that money to help pay for the expenses and needs of Anchor Square and some other places. Well, as you can imagine, that money's gone now, so we would like to continue to help and do the work that's needed at Anchor Square and some other work that's needed in that area. We believe that, you know, we will commit to staying, keeping that expense within the amount that's generated from Anchor Square profits. We were thinking it would be, if y'all would consider it, maybe we could retain the revenues that come in from Anchor Square and use those to help do repair work for Anchor Square and some other items that are needed in that area. That was our ask for your consideration.
Alan, how did it come about that, because it's really, I was not aware of this, it may have even occurred on our watch, but I was not aware that basically the PRA was responsible for the costs of Anchor Square, including the insurance and maintenance, but yet the revenues were coming to the city. Can you give me a little, what's the timeframe that that occurred?
Right, we had a budget issue here at the city. The city was doing the maintenance for Anchor Square, so it made sense that they were paying the monies for Anchor Square. Then we had to kind of scale back on a lot of different kind of city services. We were asked to do both, one, not ask for money, and then for the money we do have, I could use it for the repair work and the other work of Anchor Square. So it was only because we had some money still there that the city asked us to help out with the Anchor Square part, take that, take that financial obligation off the city.
And I appreciate you doing that, and my, if you're taking the financial burden off of us, what limited financial benefit there is, I think it should go to the PRA so that those revenues are used to pay the expenses that you're incurring on behalf of Anchor Square. Does any member of the council have any questions? Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Pasca Gula and the Pasca Gula Redevelopment Authority?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, stick a five, saying aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, with regard to the consent agenda with the amendments and substitutions. You back to Chance Record?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank y'all for coming, both of you. All right, on the consent agenda with the amendment and substitution that was mentioned by Acting City Manager Frank Porter, is there a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second? Haven't heard a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, stick a five, saying aye, any opposed? Next item is the legislative roundtable, and I believe tonight we have, I see at least Senator Wiggins, I don't see Representative Busby, and I don't see Mr. England, but...
I talked to Mr. England earlier, he was gonna make it through that prior.
He said he'd... Sorry, y'all just stuck with me.
Come on up.
Well, I guess it's just me then, sorry Frank.
We appreciate you being here, and Councilmember, if you wouldn't mind, per today, I sent our delegation, including Mr. Busby, Mr. Wiggins, and Mr. England, the items that were being discussed with the council, just to go over these in short order. And council, of course, feel free to jump in and offer your takes on these, if that's where you feel needed. Number one, on behalf of the city, we want to thank you for what you've done for us, especially during this past session. The city benefited greatly from your leadership and Senate and also in the House, with Mr. Busby. You were well represented, and we saw the dividends of that come back to Pasca Gula last session, we really thank you for that. Going forward, of course, last year, we, as the council, and in us as administration, we recommended that the potential for the date change for city elections, that went through committee, didn't come out of committee last year, due in large part to some, I guess, politicization, if you will.
That would never happen on a election.
M and L, yeah. So we wanted to see that come back again, basically because of the same issues. When you get elected to city office, you're faced with an eight weeks passing a budget that you can't audit, you can't really get your hands around, so it's really not practical from a city standpoint. Also, the second round of funding for Lowry Island, of course, last year, y'all were able to give us that 1.5 for the eastbound access to Lowry Island. We'd like to come back and ask for the westbound of Lowry Island to get back home. Matter of fact, our engineers with Neil Shafer already drove that up for us, we have it in hand that that would help you out. And of course, as always, infrastructure is a big deal. Recently, we've had use monies come back to the city, and also did the passage of lottery and those kind of things, so lots of effort have been made for infrastructure. But of course, any direct appropriations to help out, we'd be glad to accept on behalf of the city. And then the last two things, one is endorsing a project along Highway 90 right now, and it's going to be a long-term project. And city's over, I think, 20,000, right Jackie, is that correct? City's over 20,000, MDOT doesn't necessarily pay for replacement of those lights, and so we're right at that cusp, and if we can help, get some help to MDOT to get those lights replaced and funded after that project is completed, that'd be a big help for our city. And then last thing is, of course, the Gulf Coast Restoration Funds at the Hydro Committee that was set up, they vetted all the projects that were vetted, and are down to the last part now, and we've been recommended to you guys for consideration. And as you'll see, I'm sure you've seen, Jackson County was not very fruitful in those recommendations. And one of the things that we'd like to see on behalf of the city is that consideration be given more to our side of the coast, especially of course to Pasca Gula. Two projects, our sister city just to the west, is basically all we got in our county, so there's a big disparity there as far as funding goes, we'd like for y'all to take that up as well. Council?
On that note, I'd like to make two observations. First of all, when it comes to the Restore Act monies and the disparity in terms of the recommended projects between Harrison County and Jackson County in general, I'll just stick with Jackson County. It's not lost on anyone that, and I'm just gonna say it, we're one coast when, you know, it's us against the state, but it seems to be one county when it's, you know, the counties discussing among themselves, and it always seems to be Harrison County. And as, as Mr. Porter pointed out, I was very disappointed with the recommendations, there's a lot of reasons for it, I'm not criticizing anyone in particular. But I think it bears noting, and I'll basically say it to the right person when I get the opportunity to, that in the gubernatorial Republican primary, this county, Jackson County, was the largest percentage vote for the incoming governor. And in the general election, it was the second highest in terms of percentage. And that's something that my mind carries weight, and I would hope, and again, I'm not asking Bryce that you towed our water, but at the same time, I think the message needs to go out that, you know, Jackson County is an important part of this coast. I would argue more important than perhaps some others, but I don't want to get in that fight. That's for another time and another place. But I, what I see as a, I'll kindly call it an oversight, cannot be left unremedied. And fortunately, the recommending body is exactly that. The decisions will be made by others, and I would ask for any and all the help that you can give in spreading that message to the appropriate people, that Jackson County has just as much a stake, if not an even more important stake, in how those monies are distributed than our neighbor to the west.
Well, if I can, I'll say a few things on that. I mean, I don't, I hear what you're saying, and to a big degree, I, Jackson County always has to fight for its share in the legislature. And I'm not, I don't know, I'm not quite sure what specific projects you're talking about, of the, the, the different balance between the counties. I will highlight that over the last number of years, for example, just this, this past session, the LPK, we secured a million dollars for the LPK, we secured $650,000 for the Maritime Museum. You just heard from Alan Suddath, the PRA, we got a million, we secured a million dollars for the condominiums down there, in which the PRA did a great job of spreading that. So I can't, and you heard, we just broke ground on the Enviva plant in the city of Pasca Gula. So I do think we are certainly, from before I got there, we are getting that share in terms of individual projects and things. Could we always get more? Sure. And as it pertains to the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, you're right, that that's just a recommending body. And, you know, the legislature on that body has no say on that, but my, and I'm not sure how many projects came into NDA, but they cut it down to a shortlist, but the legislature had really nothing to do with that part of it. I will tell you this, and Charles, Representative Busby and I were at Robery, I guess it was about three or four weeks ago, and we said this, we, from the time that the legislature put forth the BP, and certainly when we passed the bill, we, we, the whole coastal delegation from Hancock over here to Jackson has said it needs to be transformative economic development projects. I am not lying when I say that in talking with my colleagues, that we've been a little disappointed in the projects that have made it out, okay? And as Charles Busby said at Robery, there is nothing in that legislation that requires us to appropriate money, okay? And so where's it gonna land? I don't know, we've heard, we've heard different, we've seen what's going on with the shortlist, but our, the plan for the GCRF money was to do transformative economic development projects. And what is still up for debate within the legislature is, do those projects that have been recommended meet that standard, okay? And it's not defined in there, but that's where we are, and I'm not, again, I'm not gonna lie and say people aren't disappointed in that we didn't see the transformative, those kind of projects. What I mean, you know, there's a lot of parameters, private dollars put into it, we want this to be sustaining, we've learned our, we think we've learned our lesson from Katrina, and the money's not gonna last forever. So where's that gonna end up? I don't know. I don't, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're referencing in that we haven't gotten our fair share, other than if you're just talking about...
I'm talking about the Restore Act, that's exactly, that's all I'm talking about, not any of the legislation. Yes, yeah, there's two separate plots of money. The ones, the Restore Act, the governor's all the same NDA, and that's the one initiative that was announced, presented last week when they brought out the last...
Well, yeah, that's from the national, the Restore Act funds. Oh, there he is, okay, so I'm covering for him once again.
The other part of money, of course, is the, is the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, and that's what, that's what they're referencing here, is that, you know, out of the 128 projects that were, that were done, $195 million was being considered outside of Jackson County. And only four projects were being considered for that first round of funding, only two meeting the final round of recognition, the focus to you guys. And that's where the kind of the crux is, is that Jackson County basically offered just two projects out of the whole lot, and then none of them, each of those is basically...
Okay, and look, that's the recommend, and you're right, we don't, the legisla, we value that, but we're not mandated to follow what they're saying. And like I said, the legislature can either fund all of them or fund none of them, that's just the reality, and there's a process and that's going on. So we'll, but like I was saying, Charles and I said, that there's nothing that requires us to fund that this, this, this session. So, and I will tell you that, that I and Representative Busby, John Reed, we fight for Pasca Gula and Jackson County all the time up there. And you are right, Stephen, that our statewide officials, they under, I think they understand the importance. I do think it's important to always remind them, and you're right, the numbers bear that out, and I do think that we'll see, hopefully we'll see a return on that investment when, when the session starts. So, you know, and just take the Tylenas, we have to deal with the Harrison County folks over there on Tylenas, the delegation as a whole works well together. I do, I've heard, personally heard about the aquarium and all the money that's gone over there. I do think that you're probably seeing the last of the funding about that, but understand this, we, the legislature, and led by us and Governor Brian and Lieutenant Governor Reeves, we've put $200 billion into Ingles. And when you're in Jackson, people look at Ingles as Pasca Gula, and they look at it as Jackson County.
But it's not Pasca Gula.
I understand that.
So our infrastructure's failing, but Ingles has $200 million off.
Well, yeah, but you're also, you're also, you're also seeing jobs being created, you're also seeing, you know, the corner store at Ingles in Pasca Gula Street is now open, which wasn't the case for 15 or 20 years.
But people are gonna fall in the sinkhole when they're trying to do it.
I understand, and that's why we also got infrastructure funding led by Representative Busby. So Ingles, Ingles is the state, the state's number one job employer, and, but what we, our job is, is to, yes, is to educate people on Pasca Gula, that Ingles is, while it's here, there's also other things about Pasca Gula, so...
So there's also one area, and you send, send her like England, they have services.
Okay, so they're here too.
So, Mr. Porter, do you want us...
Yeah, please.
Please.
Just because me, we, we went through the list, I think y'all were today. We did. I know, 6:15, but it didn't take quite so long, so... But one thing I want to say, I want to give to everybody, the folks that have made these recommendations, yeah, okay, they made the recommendations. I don't feel the pressure to spend any of this, not one penny of this money. I have been clear from the very beginning that if a project doesn't expand the tax base, I'm not interested in it. If all it's gonna do is further burden the existing tax base, it's not gonna get my support. And I hope my colleagues all along the coast will be with me and say, we don't have any pressure spending this. Until we find something that is transformational for the region, we're, I don't feel the need to spend money. So I don't want to spend it on a burning pier over here, or some little something over here, and then the next thing you know, we're 10 years down the road, we got nothing to show for this. I don't want that to happen. So that's where I'm gonna be on that, that's where I've been on it from day one. Now, Miss Connor, to your point, and to your point, Mr. Porter, we gotta make danger that didn't use in an inefficient manner by others along the coast at the same time, and then we end up with nothing here, and they spend it all over in Hancock, Harrison County. I got you. If we see that coming, and we're outvoted, because y'all know where we are in the legislature, it's 107 to 15 every time something comes up. 107 to 15. Just getting this to the coast was, was something tough to do, something very tough to do. So, I mean, that, that's where I am with that, that a couple of projects here in Pasca Gula, I don't know that they did what, I don't know that they made, they meet my test.
Well, so that was, and those are some of my questions. So, you know, are our projects substandard? And, you know, are, is the substance of the projects substandard?
You mean the projects submitted by Pasca Gula?
By Pasca Gula, and was the presentation of our projects substandard? You know, what can we do to make our projects better?
Dream bigger.
Right, I don't disagree with that. And I will say this, and it goes with the restore, what Frank is talking about, the national restore money. The more transformative, the more private dollars, the more people you can positively affect, the more bigger is better in doing it in a way that is financially responsible. And the obvious is, if you come to us and you say, we want $25 million, all of GCRF funds, sorry, that's just not gonna happen, it's gonna happen. That's not what the legislature, that's not what the coast delegation does. If you say, the example that I use is the, the best example is, you know, we're working on, and Charles has helped with the North Rail Connector, so the, the, the Jackson County Economic Development Foundation put in whatever it was, millions of dollars, the county put in millions of dollars, the Enviva put in millions of dollars, and then the state came in and put in $10 million. Then we got the Tiger Grant from the feds, and guess what, we've got Enviva now coming from that. My point is, just like Charles is saying, think big, don't think small, and maybe that's part of what we need to be doing, is telling you to think big instead of, because we, because we do when you're dealing with Tylenas, you're dealing with docks and piers and stuff, we're talking about big. And the reason we come, have taken this position is because this is the only money that is set aside that we have for economic development. If you're dealing with restore, it's gotta be, it's gotta be, you know, education, or it's gotta be environment, huh?
Controversial.
Something like that, this is economic development.
So, so guys, how do, how do we make that work as far as, I mean, it's just like it took us years to get the sports play built, because if you have a revenue stream, and you're bringing in a million dollars a year, or two million dollars a year, and your project's a hundred million dollar, I mean, are you guys talking about a public-private partnership with somebody that's gonna fund this and then have that type of stuff? Or, or, I mean, because we can't do it getting two or three million dollars a year, you guys can't do it privately.
Exactly.
That's right.
Exactly, but I'm talking, I'm not talking about sports ones now.
Right, exactly.
Again, because, again, Scott, that's something, excuse me, Mr. Councilman Tipton. Next time we watch a ballgame, be like that, Scott. But, you know, on something like that, you know, does it raise a little money for the city? Is it transformational? No, it's not transformational. It's gonna be something that the existing tax base is gonna have to upkeep. So if we have something that created a, a DOD strategic area along the coast, that we needed infrastructure to support, that would create 10,000 jobs along the coast, 10,000 high-tech, high-paying jobs, that's what I want to hear about. That's what I want to see, so that we can generate tax revenue where we can build ballparks and things like that. Now, the $200 million that was given to Ingles, $157 million coming back on the East Bank, that should be huge. Should be huge in a couple of things, Jackie, in that when they cleared out all those buildings over there, we really don't know how much stormwater came through the open holes over there into our treatment facility, which increased the rates for our residents here in Pasca Gula, because of the amount of water coming into the storm, the, the treatment center from Pasca Gula. We don't, I don't know that we have a quantifier, but now at least maybe we're closing some of those off, so that that will go down and help our folks with their water bills and their sewer bills a little bit. And, and then putting $157 million of assets back on that little tax rolls is a big deal. Plus, I'm hearing numbers, three, four thousand people coming back to the East Bank to work. That's significant, I think that's gonna, that's gonna generate significant revenue for the city, I think it'll be good. Now, we gotta find a way to deal with that traffic, because the last time we had significant activity on the East Bank, our high school was right on the Pasca Gula Street. Now our high school is on Market Street, or right off of Market, don't talk. So now we've got the possible interface of a shift change, at the same time that our kids are getting out of school, how are we gonna deal with those traffic issues? I'm aware of that, I'm working on it, just like I'm working on the North Connector, because I know everybody's tired as hell with fucking trains, it's getting hard on here and down to high school.
And I'm telling you, I got stuck in the mid, this was back in the summer, and by God, my phone was lighting up the various CSX lobbyists, blah, 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 and they heard it from me. So if one thing they know, Charles and myself, they're, we're not gonna let up on that, and we're working on that.
There was a list, the point I want to listen was access Lowry Island.
Yes, what did we get this year? Yes, what did we get this year?
As you know, I put one point five million in the DMTC Act for Preparation Bill for, for part of it.
That's right.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't know whether we were talking about a hundred percent, or seventy percent, or fifty percent. What were we talking about? I mean, did, did y'all talk about that tonight?
Yeah, we did, so you're looking at about one point two five.
Another one point two five.
And on that, I, we hadn't mentioned it, but the revenues are actually very good, at least the last I heard. So we, you know, we're in a, we're in a good shape, and guess that that comes from smart decisions over the last number of years. So, welcome to the Senate, Jeremy, and so welcome to the legislature, by the way. So, uh, so, I mean, everything, everything on that. Oh, let me say that, I mean, we do recognize, we, as a delegation, we've been working with, you mentioned One Coast. We do have that, and you're right, those things flare up between the different cities and all that. But I do think that we are, as a delegation, we've worked to stay united for the coast. And the things that Charles was going down the list, and I know, we have a different perspective, I realize that, because we talked to our colleagues and all, but these are, in a way, these are good problems to have. I mean, you can go to the places in this state, and they would kill for what we have, okay? And I think maybe some of you have heard me say this, the numbers, uh, the census number, preliminary census numbers are coming out, and there's really only five to six places that are growing in the state of Mississippi. One of those is the coast, and Jackson County as a whole is up one to two percent. Everywhere else, the delta is hemorrhaging people. So they're leaving places, moving to the coast, moving to DeSoto County. My point is that these are good, good things to have, and like Charles was saying, how do we work, how do we work through it, so.
And Charles, just, just to, uh, say, follow the intro here, but I want to tell you, thank you. Uh, we were very successful.
He said thank you to the Senate.
Yeah, well, yeah, we were very successful last session, uh, with our efforts as, as a city, and y'all too were a big part of that, and we're sure that, uh, England will also be a part of the journey. We're looking forward to great things for you as well, but we really do appreciate everything you do for us every day.
Well, you guys are grinding it out, you guys make it happen, all we do is provide a little money. Uh, hopefully every once in a while, to, to help out. You know, I think, uh, I don't know if you guys, on what's happening with Pascagoula Development Authority, the money for that.
LPK.
LPK, the Maritime Museum, all have been, or helped substantially in the last session. Um, obviously, infrastructure is, is a major issue. You know, we, we've got to find a way to address super systems, stormwater systems, water systems.
Charles, along with lines, uh, I had a question for you, and the reason I'm pinpointing you is because you, I think you work on quite a bit with the, uh, with the Mississippi Lottery coming on board. Do you have a timeframe on when you think that money will actually get back to the city? Will it be one year, will it be two years, three years?
Well, no, it's, let's, let's back up. Who are we talking about on the lottery? Because the lottery, the, hey, first eighty million dollars generated by a lottery, January ninth. So, oh, but we.
And I thought the, I thought there was a formula where the cities were gonna get it.
No, it's, it's, we're talking about the use tax.
Okay.
The first check should come to the cities according to, to the formal revenue, January ninth. Is, is the number I've been told, January ninth. Yes, and then they should be, but I tell you, very quarterly.
Yeah, six quarterly.
Quarterly after that. Councilman. You know, it's just cool to be in a small town, I mean, just call everybody, but that's what it's supposed to be, right?
And just for Council, that occasion, Ms. Kirk Allen, I've been discussing this routinely, and she's on top of that fully from a control standpoint. On, on top of what projects, or use tax collection?
Yes, okay.
Now, was that the one that had the formula where the more money you spent, the city themselves spent, the more money you were eligible for, or is that something?
It, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't think the formula said that. I think what it said was you had to maintain your current spending level in order to get these additional dollars. The, the amount of revenue was based on, I think half of it was based on population, and half of it was based on revenue generation. So your eighteen and a half percent diversion back to the city has a percentage of all the other cities in the state with the percentage of the use taxes.
You've been conspicuously silent. I don't want to, uh, exclude you in any way, if you have anything you wanna add to what has been said by your colleagues. I know you're not officially Senator yet, but, uh, as Frank said, glad to have you aboard, look forward to great things from you.
Yeah, thank you, and look, I appreciate the invite too, I know I was a little late, but that's one thing about, that, that I'm gonna have to learn is, is to say no to some events, right? So I try, but, but this is all important to me, is because I, if I don't, if I don't hear from, from, you know, Pascagoula City Council on what's important, and if I don't hear from these other groups on what's important, I'm not doing my job. Um, so, and, and I told, I told a group the other day, and I'm everybody's favorite legislator right now, because if you liked something, I didn't vote against it, and if you disliked something, I didn't vote for it. So, you know, I can claim each one right now, so, uh, so I, I, I'm not gonna be in that position for longer. That's not gonna be very much longer, but I, I will echo what, um, Bryce and Charles both said about, uh, about the GCR funding and the, and the, um, the projects that, and I look at those, um, in detail today, and I think you can kinda see in those what it is that, that like, uh, Charles was, was mentioning. Um, something that's transformational, something that's, that's sustainable, um, in, in, in a bigger, um, bigger affected area. You know, I, one thing I don't wanna see is, is having, um, this one-time money come in, and we, we, we see a, uh, city or an area use it, and ten years down the road, um, we're looking at maintaining things that we can't afford, uh, which I think is something that happened after Hurricane Katrina. Um, so, so it's been a, been a learning process, but I do think there's great things going on here, and, and I do look forward to it. I, I did wanna mention, um, Jimmy Howard sent me a, a letter the other day that mentioned the, the history, I'm sure all of you have seen it, about how Ingles came about, you know? That was a big transformational deal, and I know that was huge, but, but that's, when I think of something that really made an impact, and, and public and private input coming in, and, and getting people on board together to do things, that's the kind of thing that I'm looking for, is to, to see come out of this, um, GCR.
You remember, Council, have any further questions for the delegation?
If I could just add to one point that you said, Stephen, I do think you're right about, let's just talk the politics a little bit. Um, Jackson County and the coast as a whole, uh, let's put it this way, a number of the statewide officials owe their, their elections to the combination of that. And I think the, all indications to, that I've gotten are, they respect that and understand that. But we need to continue to be, uh, diligent about letting them know that that was the case. Because as we found out during BP, when we get up there, we're outnumbered, okay? Uh, in terms of, in the Senate, seven to forty-five, okay, if that ends up that way. And I've heard, I'll be honest, I've heard in the Senate that, that they have seen, when I say they, people saw what we did during BP and take North Mississippi, the DeSoto County area, they are trying to unite like we did. So, so you're gonna have that going on as well. So I think it's important that we shouldn't lose sight of that, because you're right, I mean, that's just, that's reality.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Yeah, this is also, how was North Mississippi affected by the BP portal as well?
Uh, you're gonna have to ask Charles, 'cause he's the one that had to deal, his chamber had to deal with that. I wouldn't mind, we, the Senate passed it a hundred percent. That being said, sometimes there's just things you have to do, and.
I thought you had to ask me.
I know, I'm trying to defend, I'm trying to help you out, but ask Charles about that, because.
CPK claims in all eight states, or you do have the word, pay claims in all eight states, which somehow legitimized, that's what's said in that claim too. And then they say that the, the payment was based on law sales tax revenue, quote, state. And that's, that's where they, they, they state their claim. Now, for, for the most part, we overpaid that, but it wasn't easy, trust me.
And I, I've said it, the House had the harder job, these guys had the harder job over there, we knew that. It was always gonna be the case, and.
Hundred and seventy.
They, 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 we knew that, and, and in the Senate, if you just went with that, you know, we'd lose forty-five to seven, okay? That's just reality, and you have to do that. So sometimes rationality checks out the door on that stuff. But to get the seventy-five, twenty-five that we were at, I think, from what I heard, citizens and officials were happy about that, and were willing to, to live with that. No, BP wasn't up there, but like Charles said, it's the sales tax, and, you know, there's, things come out at that time. I don't know if that answered your question, but.
It did.
But you know, from outside a point, I think that our, our community did the job that we were supposed to do, which was demand a hundred percent, and, 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 you know, keep that up, uh, because we were entitled to the last year.
I think you're exactly right, and I think all the job demanding a hundred percent had, played a role. It played a role in the fact that our colleagues, even though they might not have agreed with us, most of them kinda liked us.
Charlie Busby, I've never heard you describe us as the good cop.
Well, I'm not. But they, uh, they do, they do kinda like us, and they recognize the pressure that we were under. That if we didn't deliver at least seventy-five percent, they thought we'd look in a new face.
And look, there were, you don't see it in the paper, but this hap, in the Senate, I can't speak about that, but there was one point, as we were getting close, and it was, it was going away, and all of us senators went into the Lieutenant Governor's office. It was actually a vote on something else, and it was all being done during the special session. We went in and said, we will not vote for that. We said, we are not gonna do that. We said, actually, we understand that you, that you probably have the votes to do it, but guess what? What it's gonna look like to you when that, if we all vote against it, which we will? And, you know, that made, you know, that, there was a lot of moving parts, but that made a difference. So those things were going on, and to Charles' point, yes, we had to demand that, and, and to get us to keep, to get us to the seventy-five, twenty-five. So we did, we did do that.
Any other questions?
I'll be your own line together.
Great, I, look, I appreciate all three of you being here, appreciate the input, and, uh, appreciate the job that you do for Jackson County, and in particular, for the city of Pascagoula.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to thinking big.
All right, moving on to the next, the next item on the agenda is the ECD, that may have been covered already, um.
Carol, can I add one thing to that? Um, having, having heard, uh, representatives and senators there, um, it might behoove the staff to report back to Council, um, in the next month, um, with some suggestions on thinking bigger than we've had in the past. And also, let y'all know that, um, that portal has been cleaned up, and has been, uh, edited, to make sure that y'all are, uh, apprised of that going forward. But also, if y'all have anything that might be, uh, worth considering, we can have a session, I mean, a work session at some point going into next year, to try to address what might be better, uh, applicable to the city for, for use of these funds.
What's the deadline for?
Well, and that's the thing, is that the restoration, the actual restore act monies, uh, you're looking at January and February before they get kinda some good guidance from the new governor's office, the MDA, uh, so you're looking at, um, mid-Fbruary, uh, assuming these is a portal to be considered throughout the rest of the year, and, and announcement made by November of next year. The GR, um, the G, Governor's Restoration, the GCR, they're ongoing. So my idea would be, and my recommendation would be, that if we're gonna give them something before, uh, session starts, or at least by at least, what's your session longer this year because of the new session, uh, first part of February should be to, to them, uh, at least first part of February, like, fair.
I don't wanna get ahead of our agenda, but I'd like us to reach out to our new person coming on.
Yeah, well, this gives it time to do that.
This is also a twenty-year deal?
Yes.
I mean, it's not like if we missed the vote on the first year, we were slammed up, but, I mean, we just need to come up with something, and, you know, have to deal with.
Yeah, that's right, it's, it's, like, it's thirty million dollars every year for the next fifteen to twenty years, and the, I'm sorry, forty million, but ten million going to the statewide fund, thirty million to the GCRF. And yes, it, that'll be every year, and you're not missing out in that regard, so there's, there's time.
All right, so moving on, then the next item on the agenda is sports complex update.
From, yes, sir, uh, we have Ben and Kevin with us from B and A to give us a presentational first things. Appreciate you coming.
It looks really good.
It's coming along now, in the past couple of weeks, you kinda start to see what it's actually gonna look like.
All right, so, uh, I guess last time was probably summertime when we last gave you guys an update. And so like Miss Conner said, there's been a lot of activity that's going on in the last few months. And so tonight, what I thought we'd cover, and of course, I'll answer any questions if we can, um, the overview I'd give you is just a general update on schedule, progress, where we are now, what we've got to complete to be ready for the 2020 season, an update on the budget for the project, and then talk about some things that the administration's asked us to talk about over the last few months, with the ideas of some enhancements that we're gonna consider, and, uh, look to bring to you guys maybe first part of December. Um, so obviously, Dave, you can kinda see a general overview of, that's the, the baseball fields, um, and what they look like as of a couple of weeks ago. Um, but in terms of schedule, this, this is the schedule we gave you guys at the very beginning of the project. We looked at it again in July, and the red dash line is where we are right now. And, and the good news is, in general, we're on schedule. Um, there's, I'll break into the individual packages that are out right now, and where specifically we are. Uh, we've got three separate contracts that we're managing right now, uh, the, the fields, baseball fields, the flatwork, landscaping, um, then you've got the buildings, and then Mississippi Power is now on site, putting the lighting up. So, good news is broad, we, we look like everything is, is in order, and we'll be ready to play baseball, uh, at the beginning of next season. Um, specifics, so we had three construction packages to begin with. The first one, uh, ended earlier this year, getting around home package two. Right now, we're about two weeks behind, um, it's kind of a complex situation, but they really are slowed down by lighting, there's certain things we can't complete till the light poles get up. So right now, they're a little slow. Hopefully, the light poles will go in early December, then they can ramp up and get back to work. Um, even if weather slows us down, the primary thing is that they've gotta finish are all the concrete sidewalks and walkways leading into the complex, and no matter what, we'll be able to get a usable area in place in case we're slowed down, and, and we'll still have all that completed inside.
The poles are on site, all that.
Poles are on site, they gotta be set, and we think that right next, first part of December, when we.
Correct, and they're gonna move on to Monday after Thanksgiving.
I try, so, so we should be in good shape there, and as long as we don't get into a prolonged wet or really cold and wet, wet period, we should be in good shape. Um, package three, the buildings, again, you guys will probably start to see a lot of that. That one's ahead of schedule, it's projected to be finished by the end of, um, January by contract. And again, we think right now, we'll probably be the couple of weeks into January, and a little ahead of schedule on that one. And that, that one's coming on really well, and, and we've talked about the lighting, it's, uh, they kinda got on, they're moving in earnest, and hope to have that up and lights testing into December into January, and those are ready to go. Um, so I'll just run through a few pictures of the site, again, this is kind of an overview, um, of everything, where you can kinda, so this is oriented north at the top. Um, you see the three baseball fields, turf sand, most of the fencing's up, dugouts going in, and you can see the three primary softball fields, roots for all the buildings, and then that one field is the championship field, which is, um, all the underground's done, uh, not putting turf on until all the light poles are set, they've gotta track across that move on. So, so that's, um, so the primary critical pathings are done, and now it's a lot of, uh, cleanup work. Again, just kinda showing you, this is about a year ago, this is what the site looked like, um, what it looked like mid-summer. Started to see the fields take shape, and now you can kinda see that same general area, where that's looking at the softball fields, the large pavilion concession, meeting space area. Um, here's kinda looking south towards the, the high school, you can see the, the baseball fields that are in. So again, you really start to see that it looks like a sports complex now. Um, this is a ground-level view of one of the baseball fields. There you can see the, that's the baseball concessions in the background, um, starting to see what the, um, dugout looks like. And I know this picture may be hard to tell, one of the little small details that you don't see until it starts to come, but you see all of those tall black poles, that's netting poles, um, so these fields won't have chain link fence around the backstop. There'll be a netting, a screen, so your line of sight is completely not obstructed. So just, that's one of the little details you'll start to see. So those poles will hold that netting up, and it'll be mounted to the top of this, uh, shape here. You can see, that's kind of the backstop, so it's a. You can see that's kind of the backstop, so it's a polished, seeing the block wall and that netting will be mounted to that. So there again, when you're looking in the fields, you'll have a very clear, unobstructed view, which will be, it's just a nice little feature that, you know, again, you wouldn't really notice until we get to this point. So there again, kind of looking at one of the baseball fields and you can start to see the dugout and there you can see the poles, they're sitting there getting ready to be set up here in the next few weeks. That's a view looking into the large pavilion right around the end of the baseball fields and in the center of the softball fields. There we're looking, in the background, you can see that's where those restaurants are to the right or the windows for the concessions. To the left is where the meeting space, like room area is. Again, this would be a walkway when we're finished walking into that pavilion area. So if you haven't been able to look at it, and I mentioned this to Frank earlier, I know Councilman Parker and Tipton, if they ever come to the site, as you guys want to and weather's appropriate, let Frank know, we'd be happy to tour anybody around the site to look at it. But that pavilion area space is much larger than we even imagined when we're looking at it on plan, so I think we'll be well pleased with the space you have available there. So now I thought, just kind of cover budget. So total encumbered project cost to date, we're just a little over ten and a half million dollars. That includes all of the property acquisition, utility relocation, and of course, all of the construction contracts. Just, speaking, wanted to touch on what's in buried in those construction contracts. Of course, that's all the buildings, fields, the seating. So every field will have bleacher seating right now and shade structure, that's already in the package. Of course, recently, if you recall, we added some more detailed landscaping, there's another landscaping around the park to really kind of frame what the park's going to look like. And then the memorial walls on the Tucker Street side that you'll go in where you can add plaques and details about former teams, players, coaches, that type of thing. So that's in right now in the contract and everything's tracking from an overall budget standpoint, at or maybe even slightly below what we've got in contract. So that's, that's good news. So with that, what we've been talking about, you know, obviously, we started with, let's get to base, you know, primary items we need to make a playable complex. We added some enhancements to some of the money we've got left over and now, you know, all along, we've been talking about what can we do to really enhance certain parts of the park to make it a unique place. The championship field was one of the areas that we talked about. We've been working on some concepts. We've shared a few details with the administration and we're trying to get pricing, nail down on that, but the thing we've kind of made the most advancement with, and again, we hope to bring this to you in a couple of weeks, are the championship field right now has a shade structure on either side of the field or on the baselines, but we've come up with a concept that'll wrap that around, so it'll look more like a continuous roof all the way around there, so you'll have shade and then a concept for some actual stadium seats. So just like you wouldn't see in a major league or minor league baseball park, you'll have some seating behind home plate and only seat about around forty, would we say?
It's sixty.
Sixty? Sixty seats, but I mean, it would be, you know, lifelike seating with some enhancements there and we actually have a little stadium area that we've kind of set up, so you've got elevated seats. Do that only for the championship field, that will be an added cost. We're trying to finalize that right now and let you guys evaluate and decide if it's something you want to do. Some more detailed monument signage that would tell you what the park is. One of the things that's not been done, the complex has not been named yet, so that's something that you guys, we still got to kind of make that decision. But then we have a monument sign when you enter both sides of the park that would say you're entering whatever park it is. And then one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, Convent Street, obviously being a four lane road on both sides, on the east side and west side, primarily our focus was what is Convent going to look like from Market Street entering the park. Right now, it's just a four lane road, doesn't need to be a four lane road any longer. So we've looked at some, just making a very minor boulevard, making the sidewalks more ADA compliant and more attractive as you enter the park. So we're finalizing details on that and that's just something we'll say, we can do it now, we can do it later, whatever, but at least we have an idea what that should look like. And then the other piece was moving from Convent East to Fourteenth Street. What we thought would be just a simple cost thing that could be done at any time there again is restriping that road so that you could add bike lanes on it and still have a lane in each direction and maybe just a center turn lane again, since it's now essentially just a street that deadens at the park and you can turn north to south. Adding bike lanes would be a nice enhancement for people that are going to the park on bike. So that's a couple of things that again, we're going to try to finalize the costs and bring that to you, what you decided, that's something you want to do now, again, or you can do it later, maybe anything you think would enhance the park in the future. So I guess with that, just quick and broad overview, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions or look at anything in detail that you have.
Do you have any further questions? There was some early talk about possibly adding a, an A field that may be more of a T-ball size. Is that, I know it's not budgeted for that, but is it still somewhat in the works or at least it's available should money become...
Yeah, I know.
...forthcoming that we could, we could add that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So I'll just look here in that southeast corner up there, right now it's a mess because that's where we're storing all the dirt, but that's where we laid out a smaller field into T-ball, Wii ball. And when we finish, that area is going to be turfed. We're actually going to plant some trees that would frame where home plate and the baselines would be. So when we're done, you could run out with bases and markers and you could play, you know, ball on that when we're done. Then you won't have the dirt in field or things like that, but that's usable when we're finished and then obviously later down the road, if you wanted to add another field there, that's a way to...
Just real quick, Councilman Tipton and Councilman Parker asked us about looking at maybe putting up some fencing in those areas to have backstops maybe facing each other so far for Wii balls. So when we start getting that area cleaned up, because our open, overall contract was left, we can look and see what configurations we can do to have matching backstops so that Wii ball could be played in that area quickly.
I've got citizens asking about the, on the east north corner, that big pile of dirt that's there, if any be left over, is it going to be salvaged or what are you planning on doing with that dirt?
I'm assuming it's the dirt here shown in the picture in that southeast corner, well, actually northwest corner is what I'm hearing. Right now, we'll use some of that dirt for when we get our sidewalks and stuff in, we've got to do some plating and stuff around the sidewalk to the, so the grass can be planted.
You think you'll have any...
There's going to be some left over right now, it's possibly the contractor, do you have to remove it?
Yeah, the citizen will, are you going to salvage it?
It, yeah, so the contractor will own the dirt. And so it can be bought, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to...
Maybe we might be owning that dirt ourselves.
Um, yeah, and I mean, that's not saying we couldn't work something out to keep it on site, but then it just becomes a maintenance issue, but, you know, if somebody's really interested, I suspect we could work something.
Another question, Jackson Avenue, I was asleep, but I'm waiting now. On the road, so let me keep going. Jackson Avenue ran across the fire station.
Yes, sir.
There's a building there that's outside of the complex, is that a part of the complex? What is that?
So that's on, yeah, on that east side there, that's where the aggregate stores and all the infill material that's going to be stored there.
Okay, equipment, okay.
Anyone else?
Well, I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure that they're, that BNA will answer those questions. So have we done anything about field naming rights?
On the, on the December third meeting, I was wanting to ask y'all how y'all wanted to approach that. We've got some suggestions, Ben has provided those to us with some suggestions on that, but we were trying to get through tonight to get that, see what y'all wanted to do on the third of December.
Okay, and my next question is, we, we as a council need to, I think, get a job description together for the person who wants to be running.
There's been some conversation with Ben's staff about bringing it through the red department or outsourcing this. You know, the one thing we found in looking at regional complexes such as this, and we've visited quite a number, is that to get the number of tournaments that we want in here so it's not just sitting vacant for, you know, eight months out of the year, it's going to take some kind of a contracted help, we think, and maybe some shared revenue streams to get this where it's, it's where it needs to be and that's generating revenue and generating tournaments that we want here. So there's options, whether it be through an RFP with a contract service or whether it be through looking at potentially hiring a person that, and his job is specifically for this complex, so there's different options to consider for that.
Yeah, because I think they'll start getting those tournaments in January.
That's correct, that's correct. And one of the things we've also been working with primarily is, we're talking to Gulfport, talking to those friends and the ones that are already in place about overflow going into next season. We've already had those preliminary conversations with them, but yes, we need to have at some point a discussion on whether the council wants to try to contract with this to have it field or whether we want to have an actual game plan through our red department to do this.
So that was my point, because I know, I know that's what I'm saying.
If there's no other questions, thank you very much, Ben. Appreciate you, appreciate the job you're doing.
Yeah, we enjoy it, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the document of claims. Does any member of the council have a question about an item on the claims document? If not, is there a motion to approve the claims document?
Make a motion to approve the claims document?
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? There were no mayor council items. Is there a motion to go to a closed session to determine whether or not an executive session is needed?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We want to thank everyone for attending. We're going to go now to a closed session. We may be quite a while, but you're welcome to stay. If not, we thank you for your time and your attendance and your attention.
The agenda to add a resolution to authorize inclusion in opioid litigation negotiated settlement class.
Subway.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution to authorize inclusion in opioid litigation negotiated settlement class?
Subway.
Subway.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution approving purchase of real property?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution approving the purchase of real property?
Subway.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution authorizing the retention of legal counsel effective immediately?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the retention of legal counsel effective immediately?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution approving the employment agreement with, with the city and Michael Silverman as city manager?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution approving the employment agreement as city manager for Michael Silverman?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution to ratify a hold harmless agreement with OCCI?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to ratify the hold harmless agreement with OCCI?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution approving an extension of a hold harmless agreement with OCCI?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution approving an extension of a hold harmless agreement with OCCI?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution approving a sublease of Lowry Island with OCCI?
Subway.
Is there a second?
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve a resolution approving a sublease of Lowry Island with OCCI?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Ryan Frederick as the city manager effective immediately?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve or to accept the resignation of Ryan Frederick as city manager effective immediately?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution accepting the resignation of Ryan Frederick as city attorney effective December third, two thousand nineteen?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Ryan Frederick as the city attorney effective December third, two thousand nineteen?
Subway.
Subway.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?